Hello?
Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the June 2nd, 2021, regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order, and if you're able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody here this evening. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Petty is absent at the moment. Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Here.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Here.
Councilmember Winger?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
And Councilmember Petty is walking in the door, so she is present. Mayor Gabriel, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, Council, we have no lay down before us this evening, so we'll get to agenda approval. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to approve the agenda, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the body that'd like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Tonight, on your consent agenda, you have approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 19th, 2021, brought forth by the city clerk. Approval of the bills to be ratified brought forth by administration. Introduction of ordinance number 3217-2021, conditionally donating a certain city-owned property described as two approximate one-and-a-quarter acre parcels to be subdivided from a portion of the 72-acre more-or-less portion of the southeast one quarter, lying east of tract A, Kenai Meadows, KPB parcel number 03901065, to Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative for the Development of Restricted Income and Senior Housing, brought forth by Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Malloy, and Councilmember Winger, with a public hearing set for June 16th. Introduction of ordinance 3218-2021, accepting and appropriating drug seizure funds into the police small tools account, brought forth by administration, with a public hearing on June 16th. Introduction of ordinance number 3219-2021, conditionally donating certain city-owned property described as one approximate-two-acre parcel to be subdivided from a portion of the 6.8-acre more-or-less portion of the east of tract four, Barron Park subdivision, KPB parcel number 04501035, to Trienvirate Theater for the development of a theater facility, brought forth by administration, with a public hearing on June 16th. Introduction of ordinance number 3220-2021, authorizing a tourism, travel, and hospitality services economic stimulus program to benefit certain Kenai small businesses and award a professional services agreement to the Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center for administration of the program, brought forth by administration, with a public hearing on June 16th. And approval of a special use permit to Crowley Fields LLC for aviation fueling on the apron fueling area, brought forth by administration. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that was on the consent agenda that was just right into the record? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item B, scheduled public comment. And this evening, we have Robert Ruffner, Cook Inlet Fisheries update. Mr. Ruffner.
Just up here. Sure. So my name's Robert Ruffner. I'm consulting to the Alaska Salmon Alliance, which is a coalition of the seafood processors here in Cook Inlet. Should I follow all the rules here? Do you need?
No, you're already on the agenda.
Okay, all right, I'm good. And also with me is Nate Berger, who's the manager of Pacific Star Seafoods, which is one remaining buying and processing facility that the city of Kenai has left. And so that's kind of the introduction. I think everybody's been here for a while, kind of knows, and has seen the trends that have happening. And those trends with limited number of processors mean there's a limited market for salmon. And the coastal communities here in Cook Inlet, we all rely on those salmon for a variety of things. And what I wanted to revisit was back in last fall, you know, I came to talk to the council, it was probably Zoom or talking on the phone to each of you individually. But the city did pass a resolution and made a comment on a federal regulation that deals with salmon fishing more than three miles offshore, which is known as the EEZ, the Exclusive Economic Zone, which those zones were developed under the Magnuson Stevens Act. So it's a kind of signature piece of fisheries legislation that provides for conservation and protection of coastal communities, among other things, in that legislation. So the story, as I can kind of recall it briefly here, is that there was a legal action taken that challenged whether portions of the Magnuson Stevens Act were being followed. And that took a couple of years and worked its way through court. The court decided that, yes, in fact, that the National Marine Fisheries Service needed to make an amendment to deal with salmon fisheries in Alaska. And so court gave some specific instructions to the body that develops those recommendations. And back in December, there was a specific set of alternatives that the feds could take to address this concern. And one of them was delegating the management authority in this EEZ in Cook Inlet to the states, so the state could massage the regulations they had to come into compliance to make sure they were in compliance with the federal law. There were, you know, a number of people recognized that there was some risk in asking for this change. And so there's a lot of public interest. There were 220-some-odd comments that were made to the council, both in writing and in public testimony. The council took an action that was different than the vast majority of those comments. I think there was like something like 223 comments in support of, you know, accepting that delegated authority to continue the fishery, as it's been happening since prior to statehood, and one that was not. And the council decided that they would amend, you know, per the court order, they would amend their fisheries management plan as necessary. But in that decision, they also elected to just close the EEZ. So that means the federal waters that are three miles offshore wouldn't be open to salmon fishing. So that's a pretty big deal. And it, you know, you go back and do the math, and then, you know, they did some analysis to kind of justify this. But essentially, what it did was it closed off access to about 25, you know, 22%, I think was the actual number they used. But a quarter, let's just say it's a quarter of the salmon that we've had access to. And so that's bad enough in and of itself. You know, you might be able to make up some of that if you're not fishing out there in the ocean. As the fish come closer to shore, you know, maybe able to catch some more of those. And that may work under years where we have low returns, like we've seen, you know, since 2009. But in a large return, that's going to be very challenging. And I think everybody knows that, you know, the analogy's been used a number of times, that if Cook Inlet Fisheries is a balloon, if you push on it in one end, it's going to pop out somewhere else. And that's exactly what's likely to happen here. So that happened back in December, and everybody was scratching their heads, saying, well, gee, what's the appeal process? How can we remedy this? And we had to wait until that recommendation from the council was actually turned into a proposed regulation. Well, that happened on May 18th. The federal registry released a, and a proposed amendment to the FMP. And they're now asking for public comments on those through July 19th. So that's the real ask here, if I cut to the chase here. That's the real ask, is that we would really like the city to take some time to kind of look at the amendment that was proposed, compare that to both the court order and the Magnuson Stevens Act, in particular, standard eight, which deals with fishing communities, and make some comments appropriate to that. So a little teaser for you, maybe, is that part of their analysis was that in order to close the fishery, they had to have no significant impact on the communities. And that's the finding that is in the registry, is that there's no significant impact. And they did that, as best I can tell, by looking at the tax revenues to the city and comparing that to the tax revenues that are generated from the commercial fishery, and said, well, it's, you know, it's whatever percentage it was. And so therefore, we're finding that it's not significant. That's pretty troubling to me, and I think it'd be pretty troubling to you guys as well. So I think I will stop there and see if there's any questions. But the real ask that we have here is that we make some meaningful comments from our local communities to this particular issue.
Councilmember, here.
Yes, thank you so much for coming and giving that. You said that we can do official comments until July 19th. Can you give us more information on how we can submit comments?
Sure. So there's a portal that they have that's through their website, and I can send that to the clerk, so that they can distribute that portal. So you can make comments. And, you know, each local government's a little different. So I don't know if you need a formal resolution or just authorization to the mayor or city manager. But somehow, whatever that mechanism is for the city of Kenai, you know, you've got till July 19th to make that happen. And again, I think it's critically important that those comments go in in a timely manner.
Thank you. If you could get that to the clerk, I'd be happy, just as a person in the community, giving comments on that. As a business owner, one thing I found with commercial fishing, owning a restaurant, when they had a rough year, we had a rough year. So I don't too agree with their findings on the lack of impact. It is very prevalent that we will have impact. So thank you.
Our Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ruffner. Appreciate the updates. So as I recall, the last action the council took was a resolution asking the secretary to veto, you know, what had happened. So I'm assuming that the secretary did nothing, or do you have any information on what happened with that, since now we have a regulation?
Sure. Yeah. So now we have a regulation, and it'll run through this regular public comment process. And so then it will land on the Secretary of Commerce desk at some point. We don't know exactly when that's going to be. But the request to have the Secretary of Commerce not implement that one element, you know, the FMP as a whole, you know, may have some issues. But the one that we specifically want the Secretary of Commerce to amend is to take out the closure of the EEZ in Cook Inlet. So that's still timely and still, you know, we're still waiting for it to get to that point. And I will say one other thing at that point is, you know, it would be very nice to have our federal delegation aware of that. So when you have the chance to talk to our two senators or our representative, you know, I think letting them know that this was too big of a bite at one time to pull, you know, half of the drift fleet's area out of eligible fishing waters.
If I may, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, and I agree with you about, I don't see the no significant economic impact, you know. I don't get that either. And yes, there's different ways that we could do this. But in the past, and I think with our two resolutions on this, basically, we did resolutions, and everyone on the body signed them. And I would be interested if, you know, my colleagues are on having some information from, you know, perhaps the city attorney could put together in the comparison that you were talking about, you know, so that maybe we could formulate an appropriate resolution, then we'd have a public hearing on it and send it in. And we could do all that ahead of the July 19 deadline, if, you know, my colleagues think that's the way to go. Thank you.
And if I could respond, I think it's a good idea, because it's complex. I mean, you know, I summarize it in, what, four minutes or something? But there's hundreds of pages to wade through and kind of find out what's really relevant and germane to the city's interest. It's hard to do with the timeframe and try to fit it in with, you know, timely public notice and taking public comments on a resolution. So somehow, we've got to figure out how to do that between now and July 19th.
Yeah, just for reference here, we have two meetings, well, a meeting in the middle of June, or let's see, June 16th, and then one July 7th, and then we don't have one, so we'd have to probably resolve this by the July 7th meeting. Councilmember Petty.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffner, for coming. I graciously appreciate it. And did I understand you to say that the proposed regulation is 100 pages long?
It's, well, all the documents that lead up to the analysis of their finding are several hundred pages.
Several hundred pages, okay. Because I was, my question was, can we get that regulation so that we can?
Yes, and that'll be in the link that I give to the clerk.
And that standard eight that you were mentioning?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one that specifically speaks to fishing communities. It defines what a fishing community is and kind of some of the steps. So, yeah, it's dense, really. But, you know, as I was kind of looking through it, you know, kind of how they justified their decision, you know, that was one that's really stuck out to me, is that, wow, no significant impact without talking to the cities?
And then the Secretary of Commerce, is that the federal Secretary of Commerce?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember, next then.
Yeah, 25% of the sales tax is not a representative of the impact of fishing on this community or the others. So I guess then it begs the question, you know, what the value of a fish is, you know, start with a fish. And I don't know if that is something that you could perhaps help provide us what that is, because it's, you know, purchase of gas and jobs and all of that. And it seems like that might be something CAPED would also have its thumb on a bit. So having others provide us, you know, with those numbers, and what that one fish or 100 fish, whatever its value is, are you kind of doing that already?
Yeah. So, well, I think what I probably would do is I would point you back to the McDowell Group. So the Alaska Salmon Alliance had commissioned an economic report by the McDowell Group to kind of go through that, you know, what the value is and, you know, how that circulates through the community. So that's a document that's readily available that we can provide to kind of help.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Been at this a little bit, previous involvement, say, with harbor issues and whatnot. And we are provided with a statistic showing the value of fish landed at our dock as a gross number, and then, you know, what our fish tax was. And it might be, maybe it's in the calculation already, but to me, that's paramount in understanding the value that comes to our community. It's in the millions, and I think we're in the top 30 nationwide for value. At one point in time, not now, but we were recently.
That's correct. Ocean economics, I work as all that information by court. And last time I looked at Kenai was?
Thirty-three?
Forty million dollars, or in that value.
Yeah, and that's significant to us. So we'll ferret out the, any way we can collaborate with you, we will. Just a question, are you the only lobbying group, or are there others cohabiting the same sphere with you?
Well, so there's probably other people out there that are, you know, are doing the same thing. But it seems like the Alaska Salmon Alliance is really taking the need and kind of talking to the local governments about making sure that they're aware of what's happening.
Okay. And then our state representatives, they're on board with this?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Askin, any comments, questions?
I am in agreement with everybody. I think we need to address and make comments before July 19th.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what, well, several things. So are you going to be going to the other coast, like Homer, maybe the Kenai Peninsula Borough, sort of, with the same ask as you have here?
Yeah. So, you know, the city of Kenai, you know, with Pack Star's facility here, you know, you have a real direct impact. But so do these other communities. I mean, the city of Homer, you know, the EEZ is the southern portion. So the whole fleet that fishes out of Homer, I'm not sure where they're going to go, you know. So and the city of Seward has, you know, a seafood processing plant over there that's going to lose significant share as a result of this, too. So there, I think you will see the same interest that I see here. I think I will see that in Homer, the borough, and the city of Seward.
Okay. So just looking at the scheduling here, we've got, we probably should introduce this at our next meeting, July, or June 17th, for action on July 7th, or sorry. So if you would, and maybe I could ask Mr. Berger also to maybe distill the impacts to the, I know that it's the processing portion. It's like, you know, the fisherman component is one side of this, the community component, but also the processing component. If we could put something together and maybe email to Mr. Bloom, so we can cobble a resolution together and maybe have that on our June 17th meeting for introduction of that.
What's the, do you know what the deadline is for your packet on?
It'd be next Wednesday.
So that gives us a week to at least get a good draft.
Oh, Mr. Bloom, I think we can do, we can approve the resolution the same day as the meeting, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. We don't have to introduce and then wait to pass the resolution. So if we could do it that first meeting in June as well, sorry, in July.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that'd probably be better. But I just want to make sure that we're keeping that ball rolling to get there. So certainly, I think what I hear from the body is that we've been consistent in our support in certainly looking at, you know, the actions of the North Pacific Management Council regarding, you know, the sheer number of volume of comments they had, and one comment and support, and they went with that. That was a concern. Vice Mayor Malloy.
So if I may, I'd like to see this resolution sponsored by the council.
Yes.
And I'd like to see it, you know, for signature by the mayor and everybody.
Yes.
And hopefully, we all agree upon that.
I see everybody nodding their heads here, so.
Yeah, I think unity is very important here.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Ruffner?
Thanks a lot for having me.
You bet. Thank you. Next up, we have unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. Item D1, ordinance number 3214-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in airport special revenue and airport snow removal equipment capital project funds to provide supplemental funding for the replacement of the wide-area tractor and mower. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3214-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3214-2021?
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, back to council. Comments, deliberation? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Next up, we have item D2, ordinance number 3215-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the water and sewer special revenue and water and sewer capital projects funds to provide supplemental funding for the wellhouse number one relocation project and authorizing the issuance of a contract for the project. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3215-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3215-2021?
Anyone on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, back to council. Comments, deliberation? Councilmember, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of numbers in this ordinance, and things moving on. And it looks like two different insurance amounts. And I was wondering if we could kind of get a breakdown of, in simpler terms, what it is. I find it a little bit, just because of the number of numbers, a little confusing.
Sure. Acting manager, Mr. Ebank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted. You know, what we have here is we had, wellhouse number one was damaged, I believe, in January 2018. Could have been 2019 earthquake that we had. And that damage, actually, I believe, started with the prior earthquake. Basically, what was happening underneath of that facility was during those shakes, the ground would almost liquefy, and the building itself started to subside. And if you went into the building, the well- And, and, uh, if you went into the building, the, the, uh, well, the old production well, the casing had actually jacked out of the, out of the concrete about four to six inches because of the settling of the building. So, uh, we filed a claim with our insurance company. And, uh, we have two options when we file those claims. They will pay to rebuild the facility on the existing site. Or they will pay, um, and we can relocate the building to an alternate site if we chose to. Um, they, they don't participate 100% in those relocation costs. So, um, because that well is no longer in production, it, um, produces arsenic that is, exceeds federal limits now. So we haven't used that well in some time. Um, we're proposing to relocate that building to the existing, um, well two, um, pad, which is on shotgun drive there by Beaver Loop. And, uh, what you're seeing here is, is the split for, um, in, with prior legislation, we passed, um, some amount of insurance proceeds and some amount of local match to, to make this move happen. We got the bid documents ready. We bid this project. We now know what all those costs are. We've negotiated with the insurance company and we've, we've agreed upon the appropriate split of costs. And this legislation will provide, um, uh, appropriate the additional restitution, which is the insurance proceeds and the additional local match of 16, or local share of 16,242, um, uh, to complete the project. So, you know, the whole cost to move the building, um, is, uh, you know, the construction cost is almost 243,000. We're asking to issue a purchase order. That includes $24,000 of contingency, um, for work in the project. So I don't know if that answers all your questions, but that's kinda where we're at.
Councilor next then.
Thank you very much. It does.
Any other comments, deliberation? Councilmember, uh, Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, so the, uh, that building will just be repurposed for, uh, adequate, uh, storage and material, uh, holding. Is that right?
Uh, acting manager, Eubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Glenn Dunning, yes, that's what's being relocated to that site for, that is.
It's its highest and best use.
And it's our primary water, that's our primary production area for water.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I guess I do have one question. So the existing slab, I presume, won't be moved. Will that be demoed? Is that part of the, uh, capping of the well or decommissioning of the well?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, um, you are correct. So the, the existing slab, once the building is removed, will be demoed. Um, we also have to go subsurface where the old well tied into the water main there. And that will be capped off so that, that's no longer, that piping no longer exists. And the existing well will be decommissioned, which they'll pull the submersible pumps and things out and then they'll pack that casing with concrete and seal it off below grade. Um, and, and so we're gonna abandon that well as well. So effectively it'll be like we weren't there when, when we're done.
Very good. Seeing other comments, questions, deliberation? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin? Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Councilor on item, item D3, ordinance number 3216-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport special revenue and terminal improvement capital project fund to provide additional local share to the terminal rehabilitation project and to provide funding to install wireless internet service for the public. Uh, Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, move to enact ordinance number 3216-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3216-2021?
Anyone on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise your hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilor Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, just, uh, uh, refresh my memory on this, please, is that, is that when, uh, when the, um, wireless internet for the public will be, it'll be, uh, of course, throughout the building. And then we establish little tables or kiosks for people to, to use. Does, does the, um, capability of it go outside of the building in the, in the, uh, say, close proximity parking lots or anything?
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Glenn Dunning. Um, no, it, it will serve as wireless inside the facility. It, it may creep outside a little bit. Just depends on the range of, of the access points that are there. But the access points that have been laid out were not intended to provide access outside of the building, but it will provide throughout the entire facility, um, essentially the same wifi that's available whether you're at the visitor center, the library, the senior center, or here at City Hall, available to the public. So.
And then just follow up, then in our, in our new conference room, then there'll be sufficient capacity to, uh, to, uh, how can we say, uh, sponsor and, and, and promote, uh, a, 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 a PowerPoint presentation or whatever of sufficient bandwidth that, that, uh, we, nothing would be compromised in the, in the, uh, in the presentation of it. Some, some of these take a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, bandwidth and reward of art, some of these promotions.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Glenn Dunning. Um, yes, I mean, it, it will be the same quality that, that is provided in, in all our facilities and, you know, talking with IT, we have sufficient bandwidth to, to accommodate this. So, um, most of these costs are just the equipment. And frankly, the, the most expensive piece is, is the network switch down there. The, the entire airport terminal right now operates off an eight-port switch, which that means eight devices for the entire facility. And this, this will require a 48-port switch, which will also provide us the capacity for cameras or any other things that may be necessary in the future as well. So, um, this, this provides more capacity than just what the wireless will do.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, deliberation? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yeah.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now on item D4, resolution number 2021-35, ordering a professional services agreement and issuing a purchase order for the design services for the Keene Bluff Stabilization Project. Pleasure, council, Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, move to adopt resolution number 2021-35.
Second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2021-20, or 35?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Councilman Glenn Dunning?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I had approached, uh, uh, Terry about maybe having our public works director give us a little talk story on, on who this engineering, uh, outfit is and, uh, what their, what their, uh, scope of responsibility is, and then just reinforce the timeline that we can expect to, to follow. Just, just a 30,000-foot view of, of where we are now.
Through Mr. Eubank, I guess. Mr. Curtin.
This good?
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Members of council, thank you very much for the question. So, uh, as you recall, last, uh, September, we, we passed a large milestone and we successfully signed a, what's known as a PET agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers, which allowed us to move into the preliminary engineering design phase. That's what PET stands for. Um, that was executed, uh, by the city manager last September. Lots of coordination with the Corps in preparation of releasing an RFP, uh, which we did in January. Proposals were received in March and, and we received five, uh, very good proposals from competing firms. Many from Alaska, several from out of state. HDR Engineering, um, local to Alaska, large firm, extensive, uh, experience on Corps-related projects. They're very well-known both ways. Uh, the Corps knows who they are. They know the Corps, uh, process. And, uh, they, they put together a, a very good, very detailed, um, phenomenal proposal. And where we're at now, we've been negotiating since March, we've been negotiating, um, the element of this proposal. So the initial proposals did not have a cost element. We were strictly looking at this on knowledge and experience and, and what that firm would bring, you know, to the, to the city as a value. And the last two months, we've been negotiating, you know, definite scope and cost, uh, related to that. As you all know, this has been going on for many, many years, decades even. We have an extensive history. So weeding through everything that's been done to date and what the value of those documents and those studies are, how much is still relevant today, um, and kinda coordinating those, um, with the engineers to make sure we're not redoing steps that we may not have to do. That's why it's been taking 60 days to get to where we are, um, today. So, uh, the end of this, we got a very detailed cost proposal, um, from them. The dollar amounts that we have associated in here, um, are, are essentially covering, uh, that proposal. There was one large element, um, that's relating to, uh, what they called, uh, data gathering, which is basically surveying, getting, um, everything from topographical surveys, hydrological surveys, and then geotech. One of those, um, that I'm still, you know, coordinating with is some of the hy- hydrology stuff that we have done in the past. So I have removed that element from the, the current PO. I haven't included their requested amount as contingency. So, so if it bears out that I go through this, that, that we have to redo all of those steps, we have enough in the requested amount to do the, the full scope that they have, um, presented to us. But I don't know that personally we need to do all of that. Some of that information, um, I don't know it has really changed and I'm gonna try and reuse what we can. So that's, that's why the amounts are, um, slightly different in that. But, uh, I have a very detailed, um, plan from them that I'm, that we're very pleased with. Goes through a very defined process. They were very, uh, familiar with how they're gonna move through the Corps, what steps we have to do and when we have to do them and who has to be involved in that process, uh, which was a huge asset to me. Um, you can imagine this is a, this is a tremendous undertaking, uh, for us. And, and, you know, there's a tremendous amount of paperwork and red tape. So, um, I'm, I'm very grateful we have somebody with the experience that they do to help us walk this path. As far as timeline, you know, council, uh, this is up for approval this evening. We will work over the next week on getting them, you know, executed under contract, insurance certifications, um, in place with them. And then that process is gonna start pretty quickly. We'll start having immediate meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers. In fact, I think we've got one on, uh, the 11th, um, I believe is, uh, the next one scheduled. Um, and we'll get them up to speed right away. Um, I do anticipate, you know, this is about a 12-month deal, um, to get through the entire process. Much of that is, is, um, going through, you know, we provide a deliverable. It gets reviewed by us and also the Corps. So there is timelines in there for the Corps to do their piece and it gives them pretty generous amounts of time to comment back to us. And, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we anticipate this, you know, you know, next spring, my hope is that I have before, you know, that I can present to you a bid-ready set of plans and specifications that fully scopes out, you know, the project in total that we, we could with council's blessing and approval and the support of the Corps, that we have funding, that we could actually go out formally advertise an invitation to bid for the actual construction. So that's, that's my timeline. Happy to, any, any other questions?
Just a, a question. Uh, the relationship with us, does it end with the, uh, awarding of the, uh, contractor, the construction piece of it? Or do they continue to have an advisory, um, role of maybe oversight supervision on certain aspects of the engineering presets that they develop?
So, so this initial piece, uh, they're walking hand-in-hand with us through the Corps, through the design phase. Once we, we have an actual construction project, there will be a, a, a construction administrative services element that they will be involved with, um, as, as well. Yes, we will absolutely, um, have that. And, and we want and need that. I, we need their support out there to make sure that, you know, their design is being implemented as intended and any issues that arise that are unknown, that they're actively there and we, we don't have to stop. You know, we'll actually have them on, on task to, to keep the project moving forward. So you can appreciate the construction side of this is, is challenging with active ties. We're on the, the water and, and, you know, doing this during the seasons and sourcing materials and things like that. So it's, yeah, we don't, we won't have a lot of time to start and stop, um, if we, if we in fact move forward. So.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question, if I may, from Mr. Curtin. So I recall, like, from past meetings, there was some concern over, you know, whether the Corps had funding for its part of the review process that we'll be going through with this as we, as, as HDR develops the design documents. Is, is, is that concern no longer there? Got, kinda gone away or?
So, uh, so that concern is always there with me.
Okay.
You know, we, uh, we do have open communication. Our project from the Corps standpoint, they did not fund their share of the design element. So as you may recall, this, this entire project essentially is 65% federal funding, 35% city share. So the, the day after we executed the PET agreement, we, the city of Keene, I sent a check for our 35% share on the estimate. They had it the next day, uh, it was sent out. As we went through the fall and into the winter, it never got funded on their end, which was very, uh, unusual. It, um, they don't, from what I hear, it's, it's unusual for them to execute a PET agreement and then not follow that up with immediate funding. So there, there was an oddity, uh, as it related to that. Now, council, through the city manager, um, um, has, you know, authorized that we can, we will front-end the design effort on this. So we, we, um, have that. I have the funding in place and, and our intention is to, to do that. We have the money available for them to bill to. Um, and we are having meetings. I'm not sure how, I don't understand what the problem is. I have the money in place. So whether it's Corps-colored money or our city, I don't know that it, to me, it doesn't matter. To some of the, and I don't wanna say the, the lower end, but some of my counterparts that are not perhaps full decision-makers are hesitant to use those funds. So, um, the city manager and I have, have a meeting, uh, with one of the higher-ups at the Corps pending, um, uh, here in the next week or so. And we're, we, that is one of the topics that we wanna clarify to make sure that's not an issue.
Thank you. You can answer my question.
It's, it's, it's an ongoing concern with me and I'll know more as we get into this. It's just this initial getting underway. I, I have to have them involved in this process. We have steps that I must have concurrence from them or I, or we are at risk moving forward. So they, they have to be involved in this process. I can, I can't do it without them.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Curtin.
Request unanimous consent?
Very good. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number 2021-35 is adopted. But I will just add that, um, maybe Mr. Eubank, if you'd just take a note, is now that we've awarded that contract, if we can have HDR, it's, it's maybe 35%, uh, come and present to council or at some point, give us an update as we're moving through this process. So if any council has, members have questions from them specifically, we would be able to interact with them. Thank you. Next up, council, we have item D5, resolution number 2021-36, authorizing the purchase of a new grader for the Streets Department through utilization of the State of Alaska procurement contract and issuance of a purchase order. Pleasure, council. Councilor next then.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution 2021-36.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2021-36?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, just a, a question of how this works. We're, we're, uh, surplusing two graders and bringing one in, but the mechanical attributes of the new grader is such that we will, we won't need the services of two graders? Is that?
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Glenn Dunning. So if, if you remember, um, in the FY '21 budget, this, this actual budget we're still under right now, we proposed to lease two graders. to lease two graders, surplus two graders and lease two graders for five months out of the year, as opposed to buying new. At the time we we adopted the budget, we thought we had relatively solid quotes or conception with some of the the companies out there. But when we actually went to lease them, the price went up significantly. So we utilized the two graders that we were going to surplus again this last winter. This way, the the plan now is to surplus those two and replace with just one. But if you also remember, we just, we had a vacancy in one of our street operator positions that we've chosen not to fill at this time. So we'll actually be down a man as well. So can I definitively tell you this isn't going to impact, you know, our snow removal efforts? Probably not. But we don't believe that those impacts are going to be so substantial that, one, most people will notice, or that, you know, it's not something we can deal with. So if I could ask, add one more thing, just so not to surprise council, what you will be seeing in the next council packet is a resolution to reimburse the equipment replacement fund for the use of those two graders for this last winter, when they were supposed to be surplus and the proceeds go there. So that resolution will be happening at the June, what, 16th meeting. So it will be there. Just as a heads up that that's coming.
Now, thank you for your thorough explanation.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Request unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? I don't have any objection. I don't think there will be. But I just, I did have a question about the the implements that would go on the grader, because it was just a little confusing to me. So we had a base price of $290 plus the about $50,000 for the implements on the grader, the moldboard, the wing, gate, and so on. Because there was something about voided and warranty, if I was just a little confused about all that sort of language there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll speak a little bit to it, and then maybe Mr. Curtin can can fill in. I'm not sure about voiding and warranty and things. But I know we've been working over the last week with Mr. Curtin and the Street Department to pare down exactly the implements that that are needed on this machine and that, you know, still meet within our purchasing code to to utilize state fleet procurement contract. And I want to say now that that we're down to about $319,000, $320,000, so about a $30,000 difference. And the primary difference is the addition of a wing and a a gate that the state doesn't utilize typically on their equipment and things like that, and a couple other small things. So I don't know if you know anything about the warranty portion of this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. And, yeah, we did just finalize costs with with the vendor on this particular piece of equipment. Some of the aftermarket stuff, we don't like, we have an active warranty on this piece of equipment. It's certain attachments that require welding and and other, you know, things to do. We try to avoid doing that on equipment that we have active warranties through a manufacturer on. The state contract is is particular because they put out a list of equipment, and it has a list of of potential options. But the vendors don't always offer pricing on those options. So they're they're always willing to sell them to you, but they're not always willing to lock in a price on a state contract. And the State of Alaska doesn't always use those specific attachments, so that they don't always, you know, necessarily care. So we're always kind of walking a line of, does this work for us, or do we just go out and bid it ourselves? So we like to piggyback when we can, because there is some buy, there's some savings with the buying power that they provide. But we also still want to make sure that we get what we need for from a municipality standpoint. So we've got it down now to where we're purchasing about purchasing about $30,000 worth of additional options that were not on the state contract. I would also like to mention, you know, so Terry mentioned, we're about $319.00. We're asking for a P O for $340,000. As you all know, gas has gone up $1 in six months. Freight, which might not be for six months from now, is a variable. It may go up or down, you know, several thousand dollars, depending on when the equipment ships and how it gets here and things like that. So so that little buffer is is also to assist with that. But it does, we will absolutely be under the $340,000.
Okay. And was a nose plow included in part one of the attachments?
It is not. We are not getting that with this. So we're we're getting, there's there's some cab issues that we're getting that that provide for defrosting of the glass when the guys are going down the street, and it's it's blowing, and they would need to be able to see. There's some defrost elements in there that were picked up. We're getting a two-foot wider moldboard for the roadway, which improves the time that it takes them to go, you know, in and out of subdivisions. The gate, the wing, was another.
Spare tire.
A spare tire. Yeah, it's it's all, it's all very practical stuff. None of, none of this stuff is.
Yeah, yeah. No objection. I was just curious, because we we just, just on personal, we use wing, our nose plows on our, boss nose plows on our graders, and they're really, I found them pretty valuable for, especially in heavy snowplow years.
One of the other things that we're trying to do, so we still have three graders. We also have the two trucks, which we, you know, purchased here in in recent past. And we only have five operators. So I I'm at a point where we, I have plenty of toys and not necessarily enough bodies. So it's not to say that the graders, being down a grader, will have, it just means that somebody is might, is going to be driving a plow truck instead of sitting in a grader, or perhaps sitting in a snow blower, going through, you know, woodlands or in the woods or something like that. So it'll, it'll, there will be a slight change to how we're doing it. But I I don't see it being a drastic impact to how the city's being.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Curtin. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing on resolution number 2021-36 is adopted. Next up, we have resolution number 2021-37, approving an amendment to a lease of airport reserve lands using the standard lease form between the City of Kenai and SOAR International Ministries Incorporated for Track A2, General Aviation Apron Subdivision Number Seven. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next, or councilmember next, then.
Thank you. I I move to adopt resolution 2021-37.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2021-37?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Wendell Garrison, and I am the Assistant Director of SOAR International, looking to lease the parcel of land on the airport property. And I just wanted to thank you for considering that. I know Dick Page would love to be here, but he's recovering from COVID right now, and he's not able to. And so you get me second in command. But just wanted to let you know, we have considered this very deeply. Our Board of Managers and Board of Directors and the leadership staff of SOAR have conducted a feasibility study along with a business plan for the FBO hangar that we proposed to build on the on the site. And in all cases, we have felt like this is the right step to take. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for looking at that tonight and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Garrison? Councilmember next, then.
I might have some more questions, too, as we go on. But you mentioned the field hangar. There's actually two parts to this project.
Yes.
And the the hangar would be Phase One, and the the office and the other facility. Could you, could you kind of talk about what, how the two buildings go together, and and your your commitment to to building them both? Because they're happening at different times.
Yes. The first part would be the phase of the hangar itself. We see that is pretty crucial to the airport in providing a storage apartment for airplanes that come in and use the Kenai Airport. We want to put the additional office on the backside of it to help provide services for the pilots and anybody that comes in to play there. We've looked at the potential of doing it all together, but with today's society or today's economical standpoint of building materials, they are getting tough to come by. And so we proposed it in two phases to help alleviate some of that upfront. So we see them coming together eventually, together, but in the two phases, just because of the building process.
Well, I think you probably answered the question. But, you know, the the first phase, I mean, you're going to have, you enter the lease and you build that. I was just wondering if you could provide any further assertions or comfort that that second phase is going to happen, that when we enter 2025, and, well, we built this building, and you see where I'm going with that. I just wanted to make sure that, and you just, you just said you had kind of all your numbers and and how you were going to go about this, and could?
Well, for the future of SOAR, SOAR is a ministry going into Russia. And we see this FBO hangar, both the hangar and the office space, as providing longevity for SOAR to operate into the future. And we've also understood that it's valuable to the airport, since there is no FBO hangar at this time. And so we see both parts of it being crucial to providing services for the transient airplanes that come into Kenai. We've conducted, I've personally conducted quite a few interviews with the people who have flown into and asked them, what is the importance of an FBO hangar for them here? And of course, in the inclement weather, they said they would definitely want to use an FBO hangar. And that includes services such as a pilot lounge, such as a rental facility for rental cars, that we would have them ready for them, to where they wouldn't have to go out to find the rental cars or whatever, to get them to accommodations, hotels, or whatever. And so we see both buildings, both projects being vital to the overall goal of what we want to do.
Any other questions of Mr. Garrison? Councilmember Petty?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I really am thankful that y'all are here in our community, and that you're looking to expand and increase your presence here in our community. And I applaud you for your mission that you're, that y'all have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes, thank you. I, too, want to kind of reiterate what Ms. Petty said. I am glad to have you in our community. I know when Kenai Fabric went up for sale, it was kind of devastating to see that we'd have another empty building, and you guys took that up. And to see that you ran with it, and then you've got plans to expand it, is amazing. And I thank you for coming in and being part of our community and building with us. And I hope we can build with you as well.
Well, thank you. We, I'm new to the community. I've been here just under a year, I guess. And so we have come to appreciate the community very well. In everything that Dick has told us about it, he's been here many years, and we have found it all to be true. So thank you very much for your comments.
Well, welcome, and thank you.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, Mr. Garrison, thank you for coming and speaking with us, you know, about the resolution. And I definitely also appreciate what SOAR does in your business and what you add to the community. And as you noted, it's a really valuable property the city has. And and your your project and investment is 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 pretty substantial and exciting. To follow up on Councilmember Naxted's question, you know, what if you get to 2025, and, you know, you don't see the feasibility, you know, because of building material costs or whatever, of doing the project that year, would you be coming for a time extension? Or 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 what do you see happening in the worst-case scenario? Because, I mean, obviously, we're, we're hoping nothing like that happens.
Yes. In the initial thoughts of the whole project, we were looking at a two-year project. Because of the last year, we felt like four years would be more than adequate. I know it's the commitment of our Board of Directors and the staff that we don't want an ongoing building project. So we're going to do everything we can. If that were to happen, we would probably come and ask for an extension. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Any other questions of Mr. Garrison? Seeing none, I'd just like to echo the comments of our council here, and wish you a prosperous business life here in Kenai.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to resolution number 2021-37?
Anyone on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember next, then.
Just, just a couple of things. First off, I, no, 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 it's okay. I just wanted to just address that, you know, I, I think that the development is exactly the kind of development we would be looking for in that property. That particular parcel on the airport is probably arguably the most valuable piece that we have that's developable right now. It's just south of the terminal building. It's on the highway side. It's right next to the airport parking lot and a ramp and all of that. It's highly visible, highly valuable. Hence, that's the reason for my questioning of you like that. And so with your assertion that you're, and you have the plan to to move forward, I feel comfortable with that. Honestly, I had a a potential amendment, if you hadn't been here or whatever, that if if development didn't happen, that there would be a basically a penalty, no details on that. But I I feel that, you know, with your, your position and your statement, that, you know, with business also, there, you know, there's a shake of the hand in what you're planning on doing, and it's all in good faith. And with that, I'm not looking forward to doing any such a, an amendment. I just wanted to make it clear to the council that this is not just an under-the-mill lot at all. And I, we all agree that it's a great development. There's, there's a certain amount of risk as the owner, if you will, you know, that, you know, nothing has happened yet. So then that it's going to and go as planned. So those are my apprehensions, as they probably would be with anybody. But this is a special lot, and thank you for coming tonight. And I'll, I'll be supporting, supporting this resolution.
Any comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none. Clark, please call her on.
Councilmember Glenn Danning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council, we're on item D seven, resolution number 2021-38, authorizing contracts for employee health care and other benefits effective July 1, 2021. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to adopt resolution number 2021-38.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2021-38?
Anyone on Zoom can raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Maybe this, this question's probably right in your wheelhouse, Mr. Yvank, but maybe you can give us a little summary here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like, like every year, we, we've gone to market, and we've looked for new quotes and alternatives to the existing employee health and benefit plan that we have here at the city. You know, I will say that every year, when we go through this process, you know, our number one goal in this is to maintain the the quality or maintain a high, a high-quality benefit package for our employees. It's crucial for recruitment. It's crucial for retention. And so that's always one of our biggest concerns going in. This year, when we approached Primera, they came back initially with a 12% renewal increase on the health side. Honestly, we don't talk about dental usually at that point. Dental's a pretty small piece of this puzzle. But at the end, they came back with what what is termed a no-bid offer. So what that does is if we choose to accept the offer, then we commit that we won't go to the market and solicit other carriers. That no-bid offer came back at eight and a half percent on the health side and 3% on the dental side. So at this point, just honestly, because of timing, and the fact that this policy goes into effect July 1, what the administration is recommending is to go ahead and select Primera. We're doing it more or less on an interim basis at this point. And between now and the end of this calendar year, we will be exploring other markets and other providers to see if there's a better fit for the city, and if there's a better structure that we we can use. I think the bottom line I think the bottom line is, is, you know, the, the average rate increases that we've seen since the city has switched to Primera have been below, say, our, our self-imposed 10% threshold, but they're just not sustainable. We, we can't continue to sustain 7%, 8%, 9% increases on an annual basis. It's just, they're really, really big numbers. So, we want to look at all alternatives. We may find that Primera is the best that we can do. We don't, we don't really know, but we're going to put our brokers to work. We're going to really stretch our brokers and look at a whole lot of options and, and, and see what else might be out there. And there could be a switch coming in January of 2022 in the program. But as of right now, we're recommending adoption of this. This also would provide UNAM, which is, is, provides supplemental coverage for employees. It provides our life insurance for coverage for employees. So, it's kind of our comprehensive package of all of our insurances for our city employees. But I want to give council a little heads up on, on the direction I think we're going. And, yeah, we, we could be with Primera a year from now. I can't tell you that. They may end up being the best option, but we're certainly going to spend a lot more time looking where we're not under such a time crunch with renewal.
Thank you. Councilmember Winger?
Yes, I have a question from Mr. Eubank. I see that we have eight and a half percent, 3% increase. What would be the average increase for a family? Is that, are they looking at like a $400 a year increase, a 600 or 200? I've had a lot of concern from employees on this.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Winger. So, when we talk about an eight, eight and a half percent premium increase and 3% on dental, the, the current cost share with employees is the city picks up 88% of the cost of health insurance and the employee picks up 12%. So, the, I don't have the exact numbers here in front of you. I, I can tell you what, we've already shared with employees what their premium increases are going to be. The employees would only be seeing 12% of the eight and a half percent increase, if that makes sense to you. So, if eight and a half percent increase equated to $100, say, the employees would only be responsible for $12 of that increase and the city's picking up $88 of that. I want to say our most expensive coverage is employee with family coverage. I want to say that that increases around $90 a month potentially, and it could be less than that. And, and I don't have very much specific left up my head.
Thank you. And then one other question from Mr. Eubank. When we, if we go out to bid on this with our broker, are we going to try to hold the same standards of what we would like for insurance for our people? Are we going to go with a lesser one that maybe doesn't offer the same amount of benefit? Where they would have more out-of-pocket expenses, maybe a higher deductible or a family deductible? Are those things that we're going to be mindful of when we go out for bids? So that we're not losing anything that we're still gaining?
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Winger, you know, I, I think it goes back to, to my initial statement when I introduced this resolution. We, you know, we absolutely, as the administration, understand the importance of a quality health and benefit package for employees, both for recruitment of employees and retention of employees. So, those are always, there are always trade-offs. You know, there, there, you know, there are always trade-offs when we look at this. Our goal is to find, you know, the best fit for us that provides still that quality coverage. Can I tell you there aren't going to be tweaks? I, I, I won't tell you that because there likely will be compromises that have to get made along the way. But anytime those compromises are made, it's, it's mindful of what the impact is to the employees and not only out of their pocketbooks, but in the benefit themselves itself and the availability of providers locally and all of the different pieces. It's, so, and, and that's why we utilize a broker, because it's a very complex subject, as I'm sure you can appreciate.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate all the hard work you do every year looking for the best insurance package for the city for the budget and everything. And I, I know it takes a lot of time and effort and appreciate that. I, I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to, a little bit explanation to the, the funding of the employee-only HRA at 1,800, you know, including the group medical deductible, et cetera? If you could just speak to that piece of this, just briefly, please. Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Malloy. So, what the city purchases from Primera is a high-deductible health plan. It carries a $2,000 individual and a $4,000 family deductible. And what we do to assist the employees is we fund, the city funds 100% of a health reimbursement account. That health reimbursement account provides to a single employee $1,500 to use towards their deductible or prescription copay under the plan, making, effectively buying down their deductible to a $500 deductible. It's, it's very counterintuitive. You would think that insurance companies would price into their pricing structure so that we couldn't do that. But the result of doing that is honestly a little bit of inconvenience for our employees, a little bit of paperwork that they have to do. But a relatively significant savings overall to the, the whole plan. We can, we can buy that high-deductible plan, fund an HRA at 100% and still save money on what we would pay for a low-deductible plan, a comparable low-deductible plan. And then also what we see is, you know, we budget for 65% utilization of the HRA because it's typically not 100% utilized by employees because they don't always go to the doctor or have bills during the year. So, we get even additional savings there. So, it is a hybrid that we've kind of put in place. And, you know, even that's going to be looked at with some of the plans that are out there that don't like HRAs, but maybe look to an HSA, which has different characteristics and, and things, so.
If I may, so, I appreciate that because it just, you know, goes to the fact of some attempts that the city's making to mitigate the impact on employees, you know, for this coming year. So, I appreciate that. I thought that was good for people to hear. Thank you.
I got a quick question. Is that HRA, is that, can they roll that over annually?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, an HRA is, is a user, it's a one-year deal.
So, it's a default back to our-
It comes back to the city at that point where, that is one of the primary differences between HRA and an HSA. HSA's, it becomes the property of the employee at that point. And it can also be funded by both the employee and the employer, where HRAs are funded by the employers.
Councilmember Petty?
So, the HRA is completely funded by the city. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Petty, yes.
And what does the R stand for?
HRA stands for Health Reimbursement Arrangement.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to thank you for, for all the hard work that's gone into this. And regrettably, eight and a half percent is not a sustainable increase year after year. And I appreciate all the employees. And I, I do want to provide, I want to see the city provide equitable health opportunities for the employees. But that, if, at 8%, it's increasing unsustainably. And that falls back on the taxpayers. And so, looking out for the whole city, I appreciate you implementing, the city implementing that HRA opportunity. And I don't look at it as a use it or lose it. I look at it as a opportunity that's there if you need it, that, if it's necessary. And I appreciate all the employees who take care of their health. And I know that there can be accidents and events that one cannot anticipate. It's necessary to use these resources. But I want to thank all the employees who have not utilized it that help reduce the cost overall for the city and for the community members also. So, I look forward to hearing about creative opportunities that help reduce this and our city employees staying healthy and well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the city manager, acting city manager? I have one, one question, Ms. Eubank. So, the, that'll be about $191,000 hit to the health, employee healthcare fund reserves. What, what does that leave the fund balance at? Do you have, I mean, off the top of your head? I don't need an exact number, but I'm just curious.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe it'll leave us somewhere around a half million dollars in, in that fund as a reserve. And typically, just so council knows too, typically, the, the worst-case scenario is, doesn't necessarily come to fruition because of, of, you know, periodic vacancies during the year where we're not paying for premium on folks and, and things like that. So, typically, our, our actual performance should be better than that deficit. But I do expect the fund to deficit spend this year, use some of the reserves.
Very good. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council, we now have Resolution Number 2021-39, authorizing renewal of the city's insurance coverage with Alaska Municipal League Joint Insurance Association for July 1, 2021 through July 30, 2022. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-39.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2021-39?
Anyone on Zoom can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Can I ask for an addees?
Yes, let's take a 10-minute addees. Yes, let's take a 10-minute addees.[191.86][192.12](end of transcript)[193.12][193.14](end of transcript)[194.14][194.16](end of transcript)[195.16][195.18](end of transcript)[196.18][196.20](end of transcript)[197.20][197.22](end of transcript)[198.22][198.24](end of transcript)[199.24][199.26](end of transcript)[200.26][200.28](end of transcript)[201.28][201.30](end of transcript)[202.30][202.32](end of transcript)[203.32][203.34](end of transcript)[204.34][204.36](end of transcript)[205.36][205.38](end of transcript)[206.38][206.40](end of transcript)[207.40][207.42](end of transcript)[208.42][208.44](end of transcript)[209.44][209.46](end of transcript)[210.46][210.48](end of transcript)[211.48][211.50](end of transcript)[212.50][212.52](end of transcript)[213.52][213.54](end of transcript)[214.54][214.56](end of transcript)[215.56][215.58](end of transcript)[216.58][216.60](end of transcript)[217.60][217.62](end of transcript)[218.62][218.64](end of transcript)[219.64][219.66](end of transcript)[220.66][220.68](end of transcript)[221.68][221.70](end of transcript)[222.70][222.72](end of transcript)[223.72][223.74](end of transcript)[224.74][224.76](end of transcript)[225.76][225.78](end of transcript)[226.78][226.80](end of transcript)[227.80][227.82](end of transcript)[228.82][228.84](end of transcript)[229.84][229.86](end of transcript)[230.86][230.88](end of transcript)[231.88][231.90](end of transcript)[232.90][232.92](end of transcript)[233.92][233.94](end of transcript)[234.94][234.96](end of transcript)[235.96][235.98](end of transcript)[236.98][237.00](end of transcript)[238.00][238.02](end of transcript)[239.02][239.04](end of transcript)[240.04][240.06](end of transcript)[241.06][241.08](end of transcript)[242.08][242.10](end of transcript)[243.10][243.12](end of transcript)[244.12][244.14](end of transcript)[245.14][245.16](end of transcript)[246.16][246.18](end of transcript)[247.18][247.20](end of transcript)[248.20][248.22](end of transcript)[249.22][249.24](end of transcript)[250.24][250.26](end of transcript)[251.26][251.28](end of transcript)[252.28][252.30](end of transcript)[253.30][253.32](end of transcript)[254.32][254.34](end of transcript)[255.34][255.36](end of transcript)[256.36][256.38](end of transcript)[257.38][257.40](end of transcript)[258.40][258.42](end of transcript)[259.42][259.44](end of transcript)[260.44][260.46](end of transcript)[261.46][261.48](end of transcript)[262.48][262.50](end of transcript)[263.50][263.52](end of transcript)[264.52][264.54](end of transcript)[265.54][265.56](end of transcript)[266.56][266.58](end of transcript)[267.58][267.60](end of transcript)[268.60][268.62](end of transcript)[269.62][269.64](end of transcript)[270.64][270.66](end of transcript)[271.66][271.68](end of transcript)[272.68][272.70](end of transcript)[273.70][273.72](end of transcript)[274.72][274.74](end of transcript)[275.74][275.76](end of transcript)[276.76][276.78](end of transcript)[277.78][277.80](end of transcript)[278.80][278.82](end of transcript)
(end of transcript)[280.83][280.85](end of transcript)[281.85][281.87](end of transcript)[282.87][282.89](end of transcript)[283.89][283.91](end of transcript)[284.91][284.93](end of transcript)[285.93][285.95](end of transcript)[286.95][286.97](end of transcript)[287.97][287.99](end of transcript)[288.99][289.01](end of transcript)[290.01][290.03](end of transcript)[291.03][291.05](end of transcript)[292.05][292.07](end of transcript)[293.07][293.09](end of transcript)[294.09][294.11](end of transcript)[295.11][295.13](end of transcript)[296.13][296.15](end of transcript)[297.15][297.17](end of transcript)[298.17][298.19](end of transcript)[299.19][299.21](end of transcript)[300.21][300.23](end of transcript)[301.23][301.25](end of transcript)[302.25][302.27](end of transcript)[303.27][303.29](end of transcript)[304.29][304.31](end of transcript)[305.31][305.33](end of transcript)[306.33][306.35](end of transcript)[307.35][307.37](end of transcript)[308.37][308.39](end of transcript)[309.39][309.41](end of transcript)[310.41][310.43](end of transcript)[311.43][311.45](end of transcript)[312.45][312.47](end of transcript)[313.47][313.49](end of transcript)[314.49][314.51](end of transcript)[315.51][315.53](end of transcript)[316.53][316.55](end of transcript)[317.55][317.57](end of transcript)[318.57][318.59](end of transcript)[319.59][319.61](end of transcript)[320.61][320.63](end of transcript)[321.63][321.65](end of transcript)[322.65][322.67](end of transcript)[323.67][323.69](end of transcript)[324.69][324.71](end of transcript)[325.71][325.73](end of transcript)[326.73][326.75](end of transcript)[327.75][327.77](end of transcript)[328.77][328.79](end of transcript)[329.79][329.81](end of transcript)[330.81][330.83](end of transcript)[331.83][331.85](end of transcript)[332.85][332.87](end of transcript)[333.87][333.89](end of transcript)[334.89][334.91](end of transcript)[335.91][335.93](end of transcript)[336.93][336.95](end of transcript)[337.95][337.97](end of transcript)[338.97][338.99](end of transcript)[339.99][340.01](end of transcript)[341.01][341.03](end of transcript)[342.03][342.05](end of transcript)[343.05][343.07](end of transcript)[344.07][344.09](end of transcript)[345.09][345.11](end of transcript)[346.11][346.13](end of transcript)[347.13][347.15](end of transcript)[348.15][348.17](end of transcript)[349.17][349.19](end of transcript)[350.19][350.21](end of transcript)[351.21][351.23](end of transcript)[352.23][352.25](end of transcript)[353.25][353.27](end of transcript)[354.27][354.29](end of transcript)[355.29][355.31](end of transcript)[356.31][356.33](end of transcript)[357.33][357.35](end of transcript)[358.35][358.37](end of transcript)[359.37][359.39](end of transcript)[360.39][360.41](end of transcript)[361.41][361.43](end of transcript)[362.43][362.45](end of transcript)[363.45][363.47](end of transcript)[364.47][364.49](end of transcript)[365.49][365.51](end of transcript)[366.51][366.53](end of transcript)[367.53][367.55](end of transcript)[368.55][368.57](end of transcript)[369.57][369.59](end of transcript)[370.59][370.61](end of transcript)[371.61][371.63](end of transcript)[372.63][372.65](end of transcript)[373.65][373.67](end of transcript)[374.67][374.69](end of transcript)[375.69][375.71](end of transcript)[376.71][376.73](end of transcript)[377.73][377.75](end of transcript)[378.75][378.77](end of transcript)[379.77][379.79](end of transcript)[380.79][380.81](end of transcript)[381.81][381.83](end of transcript)[382.83][382.85](end of transcript)[383.85][383.87](end of transcript)[384.87][384.89](end of transcript)[385.89][385.91](end of transcript)[386.91][386.93](end of transcript)[387.93][387.95](end of transcript)[388.95][388.97](end of transcript)[389.97][389.99](end of transcript)[390.99][391.01](end of transcript)[392.01][392.03](end of transcript)[393.03][393.05](end of transcript)[394.05][394.07](end of transcript)[395.07][395.09](end of transcript)[396.09][396.11](end of transcript)[397.11][397.13](end of transcript)[398.13][398.15](end of transcript)[399.15][399.17](end of transcript)[400.17][400.19](end of transcript)[401.19][401.21](end of transcript)[402.21][402.23](end of transcript)[403.23][403.25](end of transcript)[404.25][404.27](end of transcript)[405.27][405.29](end of transcript)[406.29][406.31](end of transcript)[407.31][407.33](end of transcript)[408.33][408.35](end of transcript)[409.35][409.37](end of transcript)[410.37][410.39](end of transcript)[411.39][411.41](end of transcript)[412.41][412.43](end of transcript)[413.43][413.45](end of transcript)[414.45][414.47](end of transcript)[415.47][415.49](end of transcript)[416.49][416.51](end of transcript)[417.51][417.53](end of transcript)[418.53][418.55](end of transcript)[419.55][419.57](end of transcript)[420.57][420.59](end of transcript)[421.59][421.61](end of transcript)[422.61][422.63](end of transcript)[423.63][423.65](end of transcript)[424.65][424.67](end of transcript)[425.67][425.69](end of transcript)[426.69][426.71](end of transcript)[427.71][427.73](end of transcript)[428.73][428.75](end of transcript)[429.75][429.77](end of transcript)[430.77][430.79](end of transcript)[431.79][431.81](end of transcript)[432.81][432.83](end of transcript)[433.83][433.85](end of transcript)[434.85][434.87](end of transcript)[435.87][435.89](end of transcript)[436.89][436.91](end of transcript)[437.91][437.93](end of transcript)[438.93][438.95](end of transcript)[439.95][439.97](end of transcript)[440.97][440.99](end of transcript)[441.99][442.01](end of transcript)[443.01][443.03](end of transcript)[444.03][444.05](end of transcript)[445.05][445.07](end of transcript)[446.07][446.09](end of transcript)[447.09][447.11](end of transcript)[448.11][448.13](end of transcript)[449.13][449.15](end of transcript)[450.15][450.17](end of transcript)[451.17][451.19](end of transcript)[452.19][452.21](end of transcript)[453.21][453.23](end of transcript)[454.23][454.25](end of transcript)[455.25][455.27](end of transcript)[456.27][456.29](end of transcript)[457.29][457.31](end of transcript)[458.31][458.33](end of transcript)[459.33][459.35](end of transcript)[460.35][460.37](end of transcript)[461.37][461.39](end of transcript)[462.39][462.41](end of transcript)[463.41][463.43](end of transcript)[464.43][464.45](end of transcript)[465.45][465.47](end of transcript)[466.47][466.49](end of transcript)[467.49][467.51](end of transcript)[468.51][468.53](end of transcript)[469.53][469.55](end of transcript)[470.55][470.57](end of transcript)[471.57][471.59](end of transcript)[472.59][472.61](end of transcript)[473.61][473.63](end of transcript)[474.63][474.65](end of transcript)[475.65][475.67](end of transcript)[476.67][476.69](end of transcript)[477.69][477.71](end of transcript)[478.71][478.73](end of transcript)[479.73][479.75](end of transcript)[480.75][480.77](end of transcript)[481.77][481.79](end of transcript)[482.79][482.81](end of transcript)[483.81][483.83](end of transcript)[484.83][484.85](end of transcript)[485.85][485.87](end of transcript)[486.87][486.89](end of transcript)[487.89][487.91](end of transcript)[488.91][488.93](end of transcript)[489.93][489.95](end of transcript)[490.95][490.97](end of transcript)[491.97][491.99](end of transcript)[492.99][493.01](end of transcript)[494.01][494.03](end of transcript)[495.03][495.05](end of transcript)[496.05][496.07](end of transcript)[497.07][497.09](end of transcript)[498.09][498.11](end of transcript)[499.11][499.13](end of transcript)[500.13][500.15](end of transcript)[501.15][501.17](end of transcript)[502.17][502.19](end of transcript)[503.19][503.21](end of transcript)[504.21][504.23](end of transcript)[505.23][505.25](end of transcript)[506.25][506.27](end of transcript)[507.27][507.29](end of transcript)[508.29][508.31](end of transcript)[509.31][509.33](end of transcript)[510.33][510.35](end of transcript)[511.35][511.37](end of transcript)[512.37][512.39](end of transcript)[513.39][513.41](end of transcript)[514.41][514.43](end of transcript)[515.43][515.45](end of transcript)[516.45][516.47](end of transcript)[517.47][517.49](end of transcript)[518.49][518.51](end of transcript)[519.51][519.53](end of transcript)[520.53][520.55](end of transcript)[521.55][521.57](end of transcript)[522.57][522.59](end of transcript)[523.59][523.61](end of transcript)[524.61][524.63](end of transcript)[525.63][525.65](end of transcript)[526.65][526.67](end of transcript)[527.67][527.69](end of transcript)[528.69][528.71](end of transcript)[529.71][529.73](end of transcript)[530.73][530.75](end of transcript)[531.75][531.77](end of transcript)[532.77][532.79](end of transcript)[533.79][533.81](end of transcript)[534.81][534.83](end of transcript)[535.83][535.85](end of transcript)[536.85][536.87](end of transcript)[537.87][537.89](end of transcript)[538.89][538.91](end of transcript)[539.91][539.93](end of transcript)[540.93][540.95](end of transcript)[541.95][541.97](end of transcript)[542.97][542.99](end of transcript)[543.99][544.01](end of transcript)[545.01][545.03](end of transcript)[546.03][546.05](end of transcript)[547.05][547.07](end of transcript)[548.07][548.09](end of transcript)[549.09][549.11](end of transcript)[550.11][550.13](end of transcript)[551.13][551.15](end of transcript)[552.15][552.17](end of transcript)[553.17][553.19](end of transcript)[554.19][554.21](end of transcript)[555.21][555.23](end of transcript)[556.23][556.25](end of transcript)[557.25][557.27](end of transcript)[558.27][558.29](end of transcript)[559.29][559.31](end of transcript)[560.31][560.33](end of transcript)[561.33][561.35](end of transcript)[562.35][562.37](end of transcript)[563.37][563.39](end of transcript)[564.39][564.41](end of transcript)[565.41][565.43](end of transcript)[566.43][566.45](end of transcript)[567.45][567.47](end of transcript)[568.47][568.49](end of transcript)[569.49][569.51](end of transcript)[570.51][570.53](end of transcript)[571.53][571.55](end of transcript)[572.55][572.57](end of transcript)[573.57][573.59](end of transcript)[574.59][574.61](end of transcript)[575.61][575.63](end of transcript)[576.63][576.65](end of transcript)[577.65][577.67](end of transcript)[578.67][578.69](end of transcript)[579.69][579.71](end of transcript)[580.71][580.73](end of transcript)[581.73][581.75](end of transcript)[582.75][582.77](end of transcript)[583.77][583.79](end of transcript)[584.79][584.81](end of transcript)[585.81][585.83](end of transcript)[586.83][586.85](end of transcript)[587.85][587.87](end of transcript)[588.87][588.89](end of transcript)[589.89][589.91](end of transcript)[590.91][590.93](end of transcript)[591.93][591.95](end of transcript)[592.95][592.97](end of transcript)[593.97][593.99](end of transcript)[594.99][595.01](end of transcript)[596.01][596.03](end of transcript)[597.03][597.05](end of transcript)[598.05][598.07](end of transcript)[599.07][599.09](end of transcript)[600.09][600.11](end of transcript)[601.11][601.13](end of transcript)[602.13][602.15](end of transcript)[603.15][603.17](end of transcript)[604.17][604.19](end of transcript)[605.19][605.21](end of transcript)[606.21][606.23](end of transcript)[607.23][607.25](end of transcript)[608.25][608.27](end of transcript)[609.27][609.29](end of transcript)[610.29][610.31](end of transcript)[611.31][611.33](end of transcript)[612.33][612.35](end of transcript)[613.35][613.37](end of transcript)[614.37][614.39](end of transcript)[615.39][615.41](end of transcript)[616.41][616.43](end of transcript)[617.43][617.45](end of transcript)[618.45][618.47](end of transcript)[619.47][619.49](end of transcript)[620.49][620.51](end of transcript)[621.51][621.53](end of transcript)[622.53][622.55](end of transcript)[623.55][623.57](end of transcript)[624.57][624.59](end of transcript)[625.59][625.61](end of transcript)[626.61][626.63](end of transcript)[627.63][627.65](end of transcript)[628.65][628.67](end of transcript)[629.67][629.69](end of transcript)[630.69][630.71](end of transcript)[631.71][631.73](end of transcript)[632.73][632.75](end of transcript)[633.75][633.77](end of transcript)[634.77][634.79](end of transcript)[635.79][635.81](end of transcript)[636.81][636.83](end of transcript)[637.83][637.85](end of transcript)[638.85][638.87](end of transcript)[639.87][639.89](end of transcript)[640.89][640.91](end of transcript)[641.91][641.93](end of transcript)[642.93][642.95](end of transcript)[643.95][643.97](end of transcript)[644.97][644.99](end of transcript)[645.99][646.01](end of transcript)[647.01][647.03](end of transcript)[648.03][648.05](end of transcript)[649.05][649.07](end of transcript)[650.07][650.09](end of transcript)[651.09][651.11](end of transcript)[652.11][652.13](end of transcript)[653.13][653.15](end of transcript)[654.15][654.17](end of transcript)[655.17][655.19](end of transcript)[656.19][656.21](end of transcript)[657.21][657.23](end of transcript)[658.23][658.25](end of transcript)[659.25][659.27](end of transcript)[660.27][660.29](end of transcript)[661.29][661.31](end of transcript)[662.31][662.33](end of transcript)[663.33][663.35](end of transcript)[664.35][664.37](end of transcript)[665.37][665.39](end of transcript)[666.39][666.41](end of transcript)[667.41][667.43](end of transcript)[668.43][668.45](end of transcript)[669.45][669.47](end of transcript)[670.47][670.49](end of transcript)[671.49][671.51](end of transcript)[672.51][672.53](end of transcript)[673.53][673.55](end of transcript)[674.55][674.57](end of transcript)[675.57][675.59](end of transcript)[676.59][676.61](end of transcript)[677.61][677.63](end of transcript)[678.63][678.65](end of transcript)[679.65][679.67](end of transcript)[680.67][680.69](end of transcript)[681.69][681.71](end of transcript)[682.71][682.73](end of transcript)[683.73][683.75](end of transcript)[684.75][684.77](end of transcript)[685.77][685.79](end of transcript)[686.79][686.81](end of transcript)[687.81][687.83](end of transcript)[688.83][688.85](end of transcript)[689.85][689.87](end of transcript)[690.87][690.89](end of transcript)[691.89][691.91](end of transcript)[692.91][692.93](end of transcript)[693.93][693.95](end of transcript)[694.95][694.97](end of transcript)[695.97][695.99](end of transcript)[696.99][697.01](end of transcript)[698.01][698.03](end of transcript)[699.03][699.05](end of transcript)[700.05][700.07](end of transcript)[701.07][701.09](end of transcript)[702.09][702.11](end of transcript)[703.11][703.13](end of transcript)[704.13][704.15](end of transcript)[705.15][705.17](end of transcript)[706.17][706.19](end of transcript)[707.19][707.21](end of transcript)[708.21][708.23](end of transcript)[709.23][709.25](end of transcript)[710.25][710.27](end of transcript)[711.27][711.29](end of transcript)[712.29][712.31](end of transcript)[713.31][713.33](end of transcript)[714.33][714.35](end of transcript)[715.35][715.37](end of transcript)[716.37][716.39](end of transcript)[717.39][717.41](end of transcript)[718.41][718.43](end of transcript)[719.43][719.45](end of transcript)[720.45][720.47](end of transcript)[721.47][721.49](end of transcript)[722.49][722.51](end of transcript)[723.51][723.53](end of transcript)[724.53][724.55](end of transcript)[725.55][725.57](end of transcript)[726.57][726.59](end of transcript)[727.59][727.61](end of transcript)[728.61][728.63](end of transcript)[729.63][729.65](end of transcript)[730.65][730.67](end of transcript)[731.67][731.69](end of transcript)[732.69][732.71](end of transcript)[733.71][733.73](end of transcript)[734.73][734.75](end of transcript)[735.75][735.77](end of transcript)[736.77][736.79](end of transcript)[737.79][737.81](end of transcript)[738.81][738.83](end of transcript)[739.83][739.85](end of transcript)[740.85][740.87](end of transcript)[741.87][741.89](end of transcript)[742.89][742.91](end of transcript)[743.91][743.93](end of transcript)[744.93][744.95](end of transcript)[745.95][745.97](end of transcript)[746.97][746.99](end of transcript)[747.99][748.01](end of transcript)[749.01][749.03](end of transcript)[750.03][750.05](end of transcript)[751.05][751.07](end of transcript)[752.07][752.09](end of transcript)[753.09][753.11](end of transcript)[754.11][754.13](end of transcript)[755.13][755.15](end of transcript)[756.15][756.17](end of transcript)[757.17][757.19](end of transcript)[758.19][758.21](end of transcript)[759.21][759.23](end of transcript)[760.23][760.25](end of transcript)[761.25][761.27](end of transcript)[762.27][762.29](end of transcript)[763.29][763.31](end of transcript)[764.31][764.33](end of transcript)[765.33][765.35](end of transcript)[766.35][766.37](end of transcript)[767.37][767.39](end of transcript)[768.39][768.41](end of transcript)[769.41][769.43](end of transcript)[770.43][770.45](end of transcript)[771.45][771.47](end of transcript)[772.47][772.49](end of transcript)[773.49][773.51](end of transcript)[774.51][774.53](end of transcript)[775.53][775.55](end of transcript)[776.55][776.57](end of transcript)[777.57][777.59](end of transcript)[778.59][778.61](end of transcript)[779.61][779.63](end of transcript)[780.63][780.65](end of transcript)[781.65][781.67](end of transcript)[782.67][782.69](end of transcript)[783.69][783.71](end of transcript)[784.71][784.73](end of transcript)[785.73][785.75](end of transcript)[786.75][786.77](end of transcript)[787.77][787.79](end of transcript)[788.79][788.81](end of transcript)[789.81][789.83](end of transcript)[790.83][790.85](end of transcript)[791.85][791.87](end of transcript)[792.87][792.89](end of transcript)[793.89][793.91](end of transcript)[794.91][794.93](end of transcript)[795.93][795.95](end of transcript)[796.95][796.97](end of transcript)[797.97][797.99](end of transcript)[798.99][799.01](end of transcript)[799.99][799.99](end of transcript)[800.99][801.01](end of transcript)[802.01][802.03](end of transcript)[803.03][803.05](end of transcript)[804.05][804.07](end of transcript)[805.07][805.09](end of transcript)[806.09][806.11](end of transcript)[807.11][807.13](end of transcript)[808.13][808.15](end of transcript)[809.15][809.17](end of transcript)[810.17][810.19](end of transcript)[811.19][811.21](end of transcript)[812.21][812.23](end of transcript)[813.23][813.25](end of transcript)[814.25][814.27](end of transcript)[815.27][815.29](end of transcript)[816.29][816.31](end of transcript)[817.31][817.33](end of transcript)[818.33][818.35](end of transcript)[819.35][819.37](end of transcript)[820.37][820.39](end of transcript)[821.39][821.41](end of transcript)[822.41][822.43](end of transcript)[823.43][823.45](end of transcript)[824.45][824.47](end of transcript)[825.47][825.49](end of transcript)[826.49][826.51](end of transcript)[827.51][827.53](end of transcript)[828.53][828.55](end of transcript)[829.55][829.57](end of transcript)[830.57][830.59](end of transcript)[831.59][831.61](end of transcript)[832.61][832.63](end of transcript)[833.63][833.65](end of transcript)[834.65][834.67](end of transcript)[835.67][835.69](end of transcript)[836.69][836.71](end of transcript)[837.71][837.73](end of transcript)[838.73][838.75](end of transcript)[839.75][839.77](end of transcript)[840.77][840.79](end of transcript)[841.79][841.81](end of transcript)[842.81][842.83](end of transcript)[843.83][843.85](end of transcript)[844.85][844.87](end of transcript)[845.87][845.89](end of transcript)[846.89][846.91](end of transcript)[847.91][847.93](end of transcript)[848.93][848.95](end of transcript)[849.95][849.97](end of transcript)[850.97][850.99](end of transcript)[851.99][852.01](end of transcript)[853.01][853.03](end of transcript)[854.03][854.05](end of transcript)[855.05][855.07](end of transcript)[856.07][856.09](end of transcript)[857.09][857.11](end of transcript)[858.11][858.13](end of transcript)[859.13][859.15](end of transcript)[860.15][860.17](end of transcript)[861.17][861.19](end of transcript)[862.19][862.21](end of transcript)[863.21][863.23](end of transcript)[864.23][864.25](end of transcript)[865.25][865.27](end of transcript)[866.27][866.29](end of transcript)[867.29][867.31](end of transcript)[868.31][868.33](end of transcript)[869.33][869.35](end of transcript)[870.35][870.37](end of transcript)[871.37][871.39](end of transcript)[872.39][872.41](end of transcript)[873.41][873.43](end of transcript)[874.43][874.45](end of transcript)[875.45][875.47](end of transcript)[876.47][876.49](end of transcript)[877.49][877.51](end of transcript)[878.51][878.53](end of transcript)[879.53][879.55](end of transcript)[880.55][880.57](end of transcript)[881.57][881.59](end of transcript)[882.59][882.61](end of transcript)[883.61][883.63](end of transcript)[884.63][884.65](end of transcript)[885.65][885.67](end of transcript)[886.67][886.69](end of transcript)[887.69][887.71](end of transcript)[888.71][888.73](end of transcript)[889.73][889.75](end of transcript)[890.75][890.77](end of transcript)[891.77][891.79](end of transcript)[892.79][892.81](end of transcript)[893.81][893.83](end of transcript)[894.83][894.85](end of transcript)[895.85][895.87](end of transcript)[896.87][896.89](end of transcript)[897.89][897.91](end of transcript)[898.91][898.93](end of transcript)[899.93][899.95](end of transcript)[900.95][900.97](end of transcript)[901.97][901.99](end of transcript)[902.99][903.01](end of transcript)[904.01][904.03](end of transcript)[905.03][905.05](end of transcript)[906.05][906.07](end of transcript)[907.07][907.09](end of transcript)[908.09][908.11](end of transcript)[909.11][909.13](end of transcript)[910.13][910.15](end of transcript)[911.15][911.17](end of transcript)[912.17][912.19](end of transcript)[913.19][913.21](end of transcript)[914.21][914.23](end of transcript)[915.23][915.25](end of transcript)[916.25][916.27](end of transcript)[917.27][917.29](end of transcript)[918.29][918.31](end of transcript)[919.31][919.33](end of transcript)[920.33][920.35](end of transcript)[921.35][921.37](end of transcript)[922.37][922.39](end of transcript)[923.39][923.41](end of transcript)[924.41][924.43](end of transcript)[925.43][925.45](end of transcript)[926.45][926.47](end of transcript)[927.47][927.49](end of transcript)[928.49][928.51](end of transcript)[929.51][929.53](end of transcript)[930.53][930.55](end of transcript)[931.55][931.57](end of transcript)[932.57][932.59](end of transcript)[933.59][933.61](end of transcript)[934.61][934.63](end of transcript)[935.63][935.65](end of transcript)[936.65][936.67](end of transcript)[937.67][937.69](end of transcript)[938.69][938.71](end of transcript)[939.71][939.73](end of transcript)[940.73][940.75](end of transcript)[941.75][941.77](end of transcript)[942.77][942.79](end of transcript)[943.79][943.81](end of transcript)[944.81][944.83](end of transcript)[945.83][945.85](end of transcript)[946.85][946.87](end of transcript)[947.87][947.89](end of transcript)[948.89][948.91](end of transcript)[949.91][949.93](end of transcript)[950.93][950.95](end of transcript)[951.95][951.97](end of transcript)[952.97][952.99](end of transcript)[953.99][954.01](end of transcript)[955.01][955.03](end of transcript)[956.03][956.05](end of transcript)[957.05][957.07](end of transcript)[958.07][958.09](end of transcript)[959.09][959.11](end of transcript)[960.11][960.13](end of transcript)[961.13][961.15](end of transcript)[962.15][962.17](end of transcript)[963.17][963.19](end of transcript)[964.19][964.21](end of transcript)[965.21][965.23](end of transcript)[966.23][966.25](end of transcript)[967.25][967.27](end of transcript)[968.27][968.29](end of transcript)[969.29][969.31](end of transcript)[970.31][970.33](end of transcript)[971.33][971.35](end of transcript)[972.35][972.37](end of transcript)[973.37][973.39](end of transcript)[974.39][974.41](end of transcript)[975.41][975.43](end of transcript)[976.43][976.45](end of transcript)[977.45][977.47](end of transcript)[978.47][978.49](end of transcript)[979.49][979.51](end of transcript)[980.51][980.53](end of transcript)[981.53][981.55](end of transcript)[982.55][982.57](end of transcript)[983.57][983.59](end of transcript)[984.59][984.61](end of transcript)[985.61][985.63](end of transcript)[986.63][986.65](end of transcript)[987.65][987.67](end of transcript)[988.67][988.69](end of transcript)[989.69][989.71](end of transcript)[990.71][990.73](end of transcript)[991.73][991.75](end of transcript)[992.75][992.77](end of transcript)[993.77][993.79](end of transcript)[994.79][994.81](end of transcript)[995.81][995.83](end of transcript)[996.83][996.85](end of transcript)[997.85][997.87](end of transcript)[998.87][998.89](end of transcript)[999.89][999.91](end of transcript)[1000.91][1000.93](end of transcript)[1001.93][1001.95](end of transcript)[1002.95][1002.97](end of transcript)[1003.97][1003.99](end of transcript)[1004.99][1005.01](end of transcript)[1006.01][1006.03](end of transcript)[1007.03][1007.05](end of transcript)[1008.05][1008.07](end of transcript)[1009.07][1009.09](end of transcript)[1010.09][1010.11](end of transcript)[1011.11][1011.13](end of transcript)[1012.13][1012.15](end of transcript)[1013.15][1013.17](end of transcript)[1014.17][1014.19](end of transcript)[1015.19][1015.21](end of transcript)[1016.21][1016.23](end of transcript)[1017.23][1017.25](end of transcript)[1018.25][1018.27](end of transcript)[1019.27][1019.29](end of transcript)[1020.29][1020.31](end of transcript)[1021.31][1021.33](end of transcript)[1022.33][1022.35](end of transcript)[1023.35][1023.37](end of transcript)
Same night. Mr. Bloom, maybe?
I would recommend against it, only because they're, while they are interrelated, they both need to be dealt with separately. I can tell you that the hearing, I think, my understanding is there's lots of people coming to testify. When we dealt with this at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did do both of them at one time. I think we were here till about 11 o'clock. I think with the Board of Adjustment procedures being a little more formal, there's probably more opportunity for them to be longer. But they definitely need to be heard separately, you know. I guess it's up to council, whether they want to have a really long night or two shorter nights.
Thank you. So I'm, the earliest I would be able to go would be June 28th and 29th, that Monday and Tuesday. Councilmember Winger?
I am out of, I'm actually touring the state of Alaska with my children from the 20th until July 3rd. And so I will be in a lot of non-service areas that I wouldn't even be able to participate via phone or Zoom.
July 3rd?
Mayor Gabriel, just so the rest of council is aware, I believe for these adjudicatory hearings, they have to be attended in person unless the emergency.
Since we're quasi-adjudicial.
Was still in place.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
So I would not want to do these on a city council meeting night, given a council member wingers. And also, the week of June 28th isn't good for me either. What about if we did one Tuesday, July 6th, and the other Thursday, July 8th? Of course, we'd have three meetings in a row, but... What was the earliest date again? Was it the 18th?
Yes, June 18th.
So...
Mayor Gabriel, if I may, just so you know, I will probably be out of town that first week of July up in Bristol Bay, which is fine. It would just necessitate the hiring of outside counsel to advise the board. And I don't know if Jamie mentioned it or not, but if there's not a date that works within that window, we can extend for good cause the time. Is it a 15-day extension, Jamie?
Yep, I mentioned that.
Sixty days, yeah.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
Yeah, it's in the packet. So when are you leaving again, Councilmember Winger?
We leave on the 20th, and then we will return on the 3rd so that we can be here to participate for the 4th of July.
Yeah, I don't get back till the 21st.
So maybe we need, so maybe we need to extend it.
Yeah.
Then if the week of July 7th isn't good.
And when would you be getting back approximately, Mr. Bloom?
Oh, usually I'm back by the 18th at the latest. I usually go for about 10 days, so if I leave the 5th or 6th, I'd be back on the 16th or 17th.
That doesn't really work for me. What actually works better for me would be the 23rd. Can we do them on, I see you got Sunday here for 60-day. Does that extend us to the 26th?
Yes.
I'd be more comfortable, can we go on Saturday? Does that matter?
I won't, I won't be participating on a Saturday.
And you, when, when did you say you'd be back, Mr. Bloom? Around the 18th?
I think the 18th would probably be the latest. And if you guys sat a hearing, I'd make sure I was back for it.
How about the, how about the 20th and 23rd? 20th and 23rd. Councilmember Askin, does that work for you?
I don't see any conflict.
What time would we look at? About 6 o'clock?
Yep, that's what you guys want.
Okay, 6:00 PM?
Is there, is the 22nd available? Instead of the 23rd?
I won't be able to make that day.
Oh, is it opening?
I hope so. Yeah, that's, that's so unpredictable.
Question, which, which shall we do first?
Or the other option, if, I know we talked about doing it on the same day, but if we did one at like, well, never mind, I'm not even going to go down there. July's a tough month, I can tell you that right now for most everybody. All right, 20th and 23rd, 6:00 PM. Does it matter which one we take up first?
My first thought would be to schedule the first one that we received, we received, the first one on May 26th and the second one on May 27th. So if you wanted to do it, order date received.
Is that the order that they're in the packet?
Yep, the first one is the appeal approving the conditional use for a guide service. And so then the second one would be denying the conditional use for lodging.
And Mayor Gabriel, I mean, it is two, it is the same property. I mean, if you wanted to, you could do them both on the same day. A lot of the testimony and facts are repetitive. I just want to make sure we have a clear record for appeal as to, you know, what, what matters being considered, what testimony goes to each, but I, I think you could do it in, in one day if you were willing.
Yeah, and my, my thought process was if we're going to do them all, both in one day, was to do one in the morning and one in the afternoon, or do, schedule it. But then I don't think that might be fair to people that might want to testify if they're working that day, so. I think we'll just keep them at 6. That way, nobody can claim that they didn't have their ability as their witnesses to testify because they were at conflicting work or whatever reason. So I don't want to give anybody basis of appeal. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. A follow-up question, if I may. And we would be making separate decisions and issuing separate written decisions on each appeal?
Yes, it is two separate conditional use permits. And they're being appealed by opposing sides, so it would be two separate decisions.
Okay, and then, so I think we got that settled. I guess I would just ask Mr. Bloom if you could just give a quick overview about regarding rules of ex parte communication to our new members?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So when the city council meets as the Board of Adjustment, they're supposed to base their decision on the facts that are presented to them at the hearing. And so if anybody in the neighborhood or the parents or people in the community, you know, they sometimes may want to call you or try and lobby you or run into you at the grocery store and tell you their side of the story. If that happens, that would be considered an ex parte contact. You would be getting information outside the hearing, and it might disqualify you from being able to participate in the hearing. If you do have any, even if somebody contacts you, I would certainly encourage you to disclose, even if, you know, somebody so-and-so called me and I told him I can't talk about it, but just to make sure that everything is disclosed on the record at the time of the hearing. I would also discourage counsel from going and looking at the site. It's okay to base your decision on common knowledge that a community member would have, but I, it would be inappropriate if you went there a certain day, maybe traffic was really heavy, or you went there a day and traffic wasn't really heavy. It's more appropriate for the two sides to describe what's there as opposed to you making an independent investigation. If counsel felt like they needed to see it, we should do that as a group with everybody, but I don't think that would be necessary in this case.
Any questions of Mr. Bloom? Okay, I think, oh.
Can we, the reason for the, the good cause for holding it the 20th and the 23rd, is that for attendance and availability of the board and the attorney? Thank you.
Okay, I think we got that settled. Just out of curiosity, I guess one last question. Can either party request of an extension? I mean, not either party, either the two that were, that are not counsel as a party, but the two appealees.
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
Can they, can they request an extension? The, the people that are appealing the decision?
I don't know that we have any provision for that in the code, but if we had a request, then I would bring it back to counsel.
So that brings us to committee, commission committee reports, counsel on aging.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but our next meeting is Thursday, June the 16th. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Airport Commission meets on the 10th here at 6 o'clock. Mr. Malloy has offered to cover for me, be available that night.
Very good, thank you. Harbor Commission?
Harbor Commission meets Monday, June 7th at 6:00 PM here.
Very good. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yes, thank you. We will be meeting tomorrow night here at 6 o'clock, and I just want to give a big shout out to the Parks and Recs crew for all their work through the Memorial Day events. They really just made it that much more successful, so I'd just like to give a big shout out to them for that, as well as their kite festival. They've been definitely very busy. It's their season.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. On the 26th of the previous month, the Planning and Zoning Commission met in chambers here. Had a, a full, a full agenda. For consideration of plats, there was a resolution was passed unanimously with minimum discussion of a preliminary subdivision plat of Valhalla Heights 2021 replat submitted by McLean Consulting on behalf of Jeremiah and Jennifer Cates. There was a, also a resolution concerning a preliminary subdivision plat of Tideview Subdivision Number 2 submitted by Johnson Surveying on behalf of Mac and Carol Pageant and Ames Road. And that too passed unanimously. There was a, a resolution concerning a subdivision plat of TKC 2 subdivision submitted by Sega Sur, Surveys on behalf of TKC Limited Liability Corporation. And that passed unanimously. That, that project should, should bring some, some relief to our, to our housing pinch. Resolution was postponed, had to do with a preliminary subdivision plat of Keen Eye Landing subdivision submitted by Edge Survey and Design. And on behalf of Keen Eye Landing, and that will be, that will be heard, I believe, on the 9th of this month. There was a conditional use for eight single-family dwellings in suburban residential zone. And the application was submitted by Beiler Contracting on behalf of TKC Limited Liability Corporation. And, and that, that passed unanimously. Comments from the commission, there was a concern about the bowling alley and its facade collapsing and, you know, a little, little unsightly. I was just wondering what remedy was going to happen with that, if there was a, you know, a plan to clean it up, or what was going on with it. And that can be revealed at a, you know, a future, future meeting. And also, they were concerned about spruce beetles in the, in the, in the town. The, the amount of trees, of course, is alarming. And some were, actually, members of the commission were complaining that slash and stuff was being dropped on, on their property. And my response was, is that there is a committee in the city that's working on, on options, and I optimistically said, hopefully it will involve a place within the town where we, you know, the slash and the roots and stuff can be, can be taken care of. My own situation was, I, my neighbor and I clean up our backyards. We had to truck it to Soldatna. And other people are concerned that they might have to do the same thing, too. So I think the time is ripe now to, to come up with a, with a, with a cogent plan for, for how we're going to deal with the, with the beetle infestation. And the meeting on the, on the 9th, we'll have plats and resolutions. And any questions, I brought my packet, we can get into details if you like.
Thank you. Councilmember Glendening, Beadification Committee?
Hi, we, I don't have a committee meeting report, but June 10th is planting day, August 10th is the garden tour, and our next meeting is September 7th.
Thank you. Mini-grants steering committee, there is no report. On report of the mayor, I've got a few items here. Just want to congratulate the County Peninsula Brown Bear, Brown Bears who are down playing their playoff hockey down in Minnesota, and they beat the Janesville Jets, swept their first playoff series, and are on their way to their next with the Minnesota Magic, I believe, for the conference title, and wish them the best of luck moving forward. Also wanted to note that on, I did, I did attend the kite festival on Saturday. I gave my daughter a break and went over, picked up my three grandkids, and went over there and it was not the greatest weather, but the, there was enough of breeze to fly a kite fairly easily with very little effort, so all the kiddos got to fly those up. The biggest challenge for me was to keep them far enough apart so we didn't end up with a big joy ball between those two, but it did look like there was a few people filtering in and out, and then there was a couple pretty good-sized kites. I, I did hear, they were going to try to fly that evening, the largest kite in Alaska from the park strip, and I had a prior engagement, so I wasn't able to make that, so I didn't hear all that, that one. But again, it was, reiterate, Councilmember Winger's comments that Parks and Rec did a great job of putting that together. I want to thank Mr. Eubank for including our mill rate, property, mill rate history in our packet. It's pretty interesting when you look through that, the highs and lows that we've had over the years. It was interesting that at the time of the pipeline, and, and just when the pipeline was coming, and we had a pretty high mill rate, so like they were taking advantage of the good times there. And then in 86, when everything crashed, everything kind of fell off a little bit, so it is kind of important, I think, that we do look back and understand where we've been. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is I did attend the Memorial Day Avenue Flag Ceremony at the Keen Eye Cemetery Monday morning, and then was asked to provide opening comments at the Memorial Day Ceremony at the, at the park strip, and was honored to do that. And it was great to see, after we went through a year COVID, I think people were ready to, you know, get out and remember our troops that have sacrificed for this country. So it was great to see that turnout. Weather was perfect, and it went, went really well. And with that, I'll conclude my report of the mayor and move to administration reports. Acting City Manager, Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only a couple things. City Manager Ostran will be back in the office on Friday, and then also, I wanted to remind counsel on Friday, Friday night, 6 to 9:00 PM on Keen Eyes North Beach, will be this year's employee appreciation event. The theme of that event is How Do You Alaska? It'll be gold panning, it'll be axe throwing, and it'll be a family-friendly event, so, you know, certainly encourage counsel to come. And that's all I have.
And did you say that was at North Beach?
It's on the North Beach, yeah.
Very good. Any questions of the acting City Manager, Councilmember Glendening?
Yeah, have the targets been selected for the axe throwing?
We're still looking for volunteers, so.
Any other questions of the acting City Manager? Seeing none, we'll move to City Attorney, Mr. Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I have nothing to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the City Attorney? Seeing none, we'll move to the City Clerk, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I have no report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the City Clerk? Seeing none, we'll move to additional citizen comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourselves.
Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Glendening?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I too attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, and it was, it was poignant, solemn, and meaningful. And, but on a lighter note, the, through your offices and, and good efforts, Eagle did fly over us at the appropriate time. Thank you for that. And also, I received in the mail a certificate from the Senior Connection, recognition of contributions to the 11th Annual March for Meals fundraiser. And I, and I do appreciate the, the feedback that I, that I did get. It was, it was most welcome. And then I noticed here in our pack on page 124, we have the American Rescue Plan Act comments. And, you know, it's a just a dollar amount and all of that, and, and that is, that is something we can, we can advantage our, our city, too. There's some ideas on, you know, the, the sideboards for, for, for spending of that money, but we can, we can definitely, definitely help us with our needs of our citizens and our, and our infrastructure. And with that, that ends my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, thank you. The kite festival continued even on into Sunday, and so that was over there on the field, which is also known as Millennium Square. And there were huge kites. It was a beautiful day, and great fun was being had by all. And a comment that I saw on Facebook was that you could even see those humongous kites from bridge access. So if you missed it this year, well, we have an annual event, and you can put it on your calendar for 2022. I want to expressly, express my grateful appreciation for all the sacrifice of servicemen and women on my behalf that allows for my freedom, and just say a heartfelt thank you. And that ends my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winger?
Yes, thank you. I would like to also congratulate the Keen Eye River Brown Bears. You know, their season kind of was a lot up in the air, and they've came out strong this season. And then I'd also like to congratulate a lot of our local athletes. We have soccer players, track, baseball, that are all doing their regions and their states right, meets right now. So I just would like to congratulate all those players through the various sports. Speaking of sports, the Soldatna Whaler Wrestling Team has a rent-a-wrestler program. So if you know people that are looking to hire for yard work and various things, that is another avenue to check. I can't for surely say that the Keen Eye football play, players are doing that, because I haven't seen anything come out. I would still say to contact your Keen Eye football team as well. I did get an email from the Peninsula Oilers, and they are asking for housing. They have seven players that still need housing, and so if you're able to house a player, they'd be grateful for that, or if you know somebody that might be able to house a player. They really would just like counsel to spread, spread this, because they're, they are in a desperate need for housing. I unfortunately did not get to go to the kite festival this weekend, nor did we go camping due to weather and projects. Instead, we took out 20 trees on our property and had to do the stumps. I too would like to see a slash pile for the people in the city, because we took 20 loads to Soldatna, and that just gets excessive. And I can tell you, other people aren't going to go through to that extreme to get rid of their stuff. It would be dumped. There would be a lot of value to have an area for that to go in our city limits. As we can tell with all the dead trees, we are a high fire hazard, and that should be concerning to us all. The memorial event was great. I appreciate Mayor Gabriel's touch on the eagle that soared over at the end. We're going to give him all the credit for that, because it was a beautiful touch. But the weather did hold off just long enough for that event to go on, so I'd like to thank everybody for their contributing to that. The Keen Eye Chamber as well is going to be doing a lot of the 4th of July events, and I know that they're in need of help, so if anybody can volunteer to help the Keen Eye Chamber for their 4th of July efforts, they would appreciate any help from the body. And then, as we seen in the Keen Eye Chambers email, if you get those, Lemonade Days coming up on June 26th. This is a great event to, if you have a business or an area that you can sponsor a stand, for a kid to come and work outside that area. If not, on June 26th, when you see lemonade stands, please stop, visit them, thank them, because these kids are young entrepreneurs, getting their first taste in business ultimately. And then I did have a, a little speech today. I'm not really going to read that off. Instead, I would like to focus on the very unfortunate findings over this weekend of the mass grave in Canada, where they found 215 bodies of children. We can erase the ugliness of our history, but what we can do is learn from it. And this is definitely one of those situations, I think we're going to hear more and more about what's going to transpire out of this. But I would just like to take a second to think of the, all the kids that were ripped from their homes, and some that never got to come home, and they found 215 of those children. So I just would like to give my condolences to the family. And again, you can't rewrite the ugly history. All we can do is better and learn from it, and thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, I also appreciated the mayor's comments at the Memorial Day service, particularly about what Memorial Day meant, meant to you, the mayor personally, and was really, really well received by everyone. Previous to that, on May 28th, I, I did represent the mayor and the city at a, at a private service, you know, that was by Todd Pollack out, out there at his, you know, Freedom Physical Therapy and his new business, Physic, because the mayor had a family commitment that he couldn't, you know, reschedule. But it was also a really, really excellent event. A lot of people came to it. It was at, at least as many people as were at the memorial service. And, you know, Merrill Sikorsky was the MC who said he's never afraid of a microphone. And, and they had, you know, a tent there, because it was raining pretty hard during, during a lot of it, and, and they had, you know, hot dogs and, and drinks for people that came, which was very much appreciated. But the great thing about it was that it was, you know, private business. It was a private sector that was for the purpose of a ceremony and dedication of a flagpole and a plaque that's permanently located at the new business there, Physic, which is, and it's, it's a great development itself. You know, dedicated to veterans and to veterans who have died in the service of the country and to other first responders, you know, our, our police and firefighters, EMT, and so they were well represented. Our Chief Ross was there, as well as, you know, Chief Pryor, Assistant Chief Anderson, and several of the engineers and firefighters were there also. also. And, and some of our other KPD officers were there, as well as representatives of, of the, you know, state troopers and Fish and Wildlife, and Soldatna PD, and, and, and so, and, and C, and CMS, et cetera. And, you know, Mr. Mr. Pollock made comments, and, and also Senator Machiki commented, was on the agenda, as well as Soldatna City Manager, excuse me, Soldatna City Mayor, Paul Whitney, because he's, was both a veteran and a first responder, you know, during his career. And so they were the elected officials that were, you know, invited to speak for the event. So, but also, you know, Mayor Pierce was there, and, and Councilmember Glendening was there, and, and, and other elected officials. So that, that went really well. And I'm sorry, that was probably longer than your report. Apologize for that. But thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy. And I appreciate you standing in for me. And, you know, I'm sure you, you did fine. I heard it went really well. And, and, and for, for folks that haven't seen it, it's a, it's a, you know, basically a first responders tribute to them. And it's over on the Spur Highway, just near the intersection of Beaver Loop Road. So if you're interested in going over and seeing that, and doing a drive-by, I plan on doing that myself. Councilmember next, then?
Thank you. I'll try to temper Mr. Malloy's long report with my relatively short one, I hope. Just three, three things. I did miss the, I had a prior engagement on Saturday, so I missed the, the kite festival. However, I happened to cross the, the same kites in the Millennium Square. Huge, and, and actually, the public did, too, because you could see them for a long ways. I went in there, took pictures. And while I was there, kind of watching, there was a progression of cars coming through, stopping, parking, all of that. And it just seemed like it's also another very good location for the public to see kites, you know, if we, when we do it next year. I'm not sure how that would work, but it was just an excellent location there on the grass. Friday, I do look forward to the employee appreciation party, so long as I don't have to cook the chicken this year. And, but I'm certainly looking forward to that. And one, one other minor thing for the, for the city manager, I, I don't know if the clock in, in Leif Hansen Park has been reset. It, since we went on or off daylight savings, whatever that is, I don't think it had been. And I just keep forgetting to mention it, because it's, I see it, and then I don't say any, I forget about it. So if you could take a look at that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Raskin?
Yes, I hope everyone had a safe Memorial holiday. I, I had, for the first time in several years, got to be with my four siblings as we honored members of our family who had served and, and, and other members, friends that, from our childhoods. I want to thank the administration for their diligence in finding affordable house, healthcare. That's not an easy task. I regret I won't be able to attend the employee appreciation event because I'm still outside. Also, thank you to Jamie for having in place the technology to allow me to attend from a distance. I really appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Raskin. Next up, we have executive session. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I moved to convene the City Council, the City Keen Eye, into executive session to negotiate a settlement agreement with Ron and Shirley Smith regarding utility fees for 11440 Keen Eyes Spur Highway pursuant to AS 4462310C1, a matter of which the immediate knowledge may have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city, and request the attendance of the City Attorney and the Acting City Manager as needed.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none.
Mayor Gabriel, I just question what, whether you want to meet in here or go into the conference room?
I think we'll meet in here.
Okay.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember next up?
Yes.
Councilmember Glendening?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Do you want to have Councilmember Askin call in?
Yeah. I have to kick everybody else off. Um, nope, because I, it's, Zoom comes through. Okay, I'm going to end the Zoom meeting, and the results of the executive session will be available by contacting the clerk's office tomorrow morning. Councilmember Askin, I'm going to call you back here in just a moment. Goodbye.